At 711 221st Avenue, pin number 063323430013, with the following conditions set forth in the attached resolution.
All right, is there anyone who'd like to speak to this item? Okay, come on up, please. Okay, if you could please say your name and address, please.
Sure, my name is Kristen Smith, the kennel license is for me. I just wanted to thank you guys for bringing this up tonight. We've had this kennel license for years and years. And apparently they've changed the rules. We just wanted to make sure that everything was okay. And if there's any questions anybody had, we're here.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm John Hustings, I live in the property directly behind there on this side.
Sharon, can you open the public hearing? Just formality.
What's that?
Okay, um, yeah, sorry. So now we're opening up the public hearing.
I'm all for private property rights, and no problem with that. But I moved from a miserable city out here for quiet. And I know what a lot of dogs are like. I just want assurances that I'm not gonna hear dogs 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Have you been hearing dogs currently?
Well, we've had a little bit of trouble in the neighborhood, nothing major. But with 10 dogs right behind my house, I'm concerned. I want assurances this isn't gonna be a problem. So I will file complaints.
And there is a formality for that. So again, if there is an issue, we do recommend following said formality.
Understood.
Yep.
I also want to understand that I will create an issue if this becomes a problem for us in the neighborhood.
Would anyone else like to speak to this?
Yeah, my name is Ron Snowy, I live behind them as well.
Can you please state your name and address into the microphone, please?
It's 22277 Washington Street, Northeast.
Thank you.
I have no problem with your dogs either. We all love dogs, we gotta admit it. The noise issue is a problem. In the past, I have called the police on them because I've been woken up at 5:00 in the morning for dogs barking. 10 dogs is a lot of dogs when you're in a neighborhood of, you know, people who live maybe 100 yards apart. If I can have assurances as well as he did that, you know, we're not gonna have people, you know, dogs barking at all hours of the hour, I'm fine with it. But if it becomes an issue, I agree with him. I'll be calling the police again. I mean, there's no reason I should be in my living room trying to watch TV and listening to dogs bark.
Completely agree. And again, that's why, again, we have the formalities in place. And I know with the police, if you remember, takes two calls when there's an issue.
I will say too, after we called the police on you, which, you know, I'm sorry, it's not the dog's fault. There hasn't been a lot of noise over there. So great, we appreciate that as neighbors. But just so my concerns are heard, that's all.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, and I'd just like to give the residents assurances, again, that there are formalities in place for that when there is noise issues, whether it be dog, businesses, anything. You know, just again, feel free to reach out, ask questions. The city is always a great resource to start. And again, it might not be the immediate address that you want, but it is the process that we have. And as long as we move through them, all things should be able to be addressed.
And we, just a clarification for, since there are three private kennel hearings tonight, calling City Hall, asking for myself or Nick Schmitz, the code enforcement official, we'll take the complaints. We always address it with the property owners. That's why we have this in place. We have the property owner's contact information to reach out for them. If it continues after we do reach out to them, then it becomes a code enforcement issue. So we do have, there's also a condition within the permit that addresses that. So we do have safe holds in place for all residents, including the property owner with the dogs.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak to this particular issue? If not, I thank everyone for coming and speaking tonight. It's not always easy to get up in front of the microphone and do that. So thank you to everyone for their input. So with this, we're gonna close the public hearing on this license approval with Kristen Smith. And do we have any discussion from the committee?
Yeah, I think as long as they continue doing what they're doing and the neighbors understand that there's a process if things change, I think we're good.
Sounds like when there was issues, they were brought up and they were addressed. So yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
I agree. One thing I maybe just throw out there is if you have a problem with your neighbor, it'd be nice to address it with them first before turning it in. Work with your neighbors. They're hopefully gonna be there for quite a while. It's better to get along with them than to not get along. So believe it or not, you could have much worse neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
That's my two cents. Congratulations. They're everywhere.
All right.
I'll put a motion forward to approve the kennel license as it's read with the conditions that also are read.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you for that. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. And the motion has passed. Let's go on to the next item, which is a public hearing for a private kennel license for Alitza Schroeder. Is anyone here to speak to that item? Okay, there's no one here to speak to the item?
Planning Commission is requested to consider recommendation of approval of a private kennel license for the keeping of six dogs over the age of four months. Alitza Schroeder has held an IUP for the keeping of six dogs over four months of age on her property since 2016. Due to the recent events, the city attorney has determined that a private kennel license is separate from IUPs and the only instance in which an IUP should be issued for private, or for kennels is for a commercial kennel. Therefore, the original IUP for Ms. Schroeder will now be a private kennel license. This property is 6.69 acres. In Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 2 of City Code Governing Kennel Licenses, the ordinance states that a maximum number of dogs with a private kennel license determined by the number of acres for this property would meet Subpart 3, which specifies that properties with more than five acres but less than 10 allows for a maximum of six dogs. City staff is requesting Planning Commission hold a public hearing for the private kennel license and make a recommendation of approval to City Council for the private kennel license for the keeping of six dogs over the age of four months located at 22525 Durant Street, pin number 013323230005, with conditions as set in the attached resolution.
Thank you. And this is why I am the Assistant Vice Chair. I opened the public hearing before everything was read. But again, is this a point where I can do this?
And as a part of the public hearing, a neighbor who was unable to attend tonight did submit a statement to me today at City Hall. It says, "My husband and I live next to their property and we don't want to deal with six barking dogs. I didn't approve of it last time and somehow find out that they have gotten it anyway. I am not able to attend the meeting tonight and hope that you consider our case against this." And the property owner was also unable to attend tonight, but Stephanie and I have discussed with her and worked with it. So I should be able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this? If not, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll have some discussion with the commission members. I would just like to ask, Erin, do you know if there has been a number of complaints?
I personally never received any complaints since I started here. There are none on file for this property. So this was the first one we received today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess based on the letter, if, you know, just in any general sense, if a neighboring property came in and opposed the IUP back in 2016, didn't follow through to see if it had been approved or not approved, and only now by getting the notice of the new rules, and based on their verbiage, seemed shocked that it was approved, then that they may not have had even noticed that all six may have been there? And if they haven't made any formal complaints? So I guess just based on how they worded it, it sounds to me like they may not have even known that it was approved, let alone that they even had the six. So I have a hard time knowing if there's any issues if they've not had any reports either, if that makes sense. At least that's how I'm kinda looking at the facts.
We also don't know if they have six dogs all the time.
True.
And they may not.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, it's the up two.
Yeah.
So. But without any formal complaints, no reports, it's hard to say that they have been in any kind of violation or any boisterous concerns.
I agree. All of these are coming to attention because we had a change in our ordinance. So I don't think it's really fair, you know, if we have a, somebody abusing the situation, yes, then it should be addressed. But, you know, to your point, there's nothing stated. It'd be pretty cruel to tell somebody that they can't have dogs after they've had them for so long.
Yeah. I'll motion that to approve with, as read with conditions also read.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay?
Looks like this goes before City Council on the 13th.
Okay, and that motion passed. So let's go on to item number six on the agenda.
Planning Commission is requested to consider recommendation of approval of a private kennel license for the keeping of three dogs over the age of four months at 23001 Highway 65 for Diane Baird. Diane has held an IUP for the keeping of three dogs over four months of age on her property since 2015. Due to the recent events as described in the last two items, it will now be a private kennel license as opposed to an IUP. This property is 7.32 acres. Under Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 2 of City Code Governing Kennel Licenses, this meets Subpart 3 specifying properties over five acres but less than 10 can have a maximum of six dogs. The city has not received any code enforcement complaints regarding the keeping of Mrs. Baird's dogs. City staff is requesting the Planning Commission hold a public hearing for the private kennel license to make a recommendation to City Council for the private kennel license for the keeping of three dogs over the age of four months at 23001 Highway 65, PID 323423430013, with the conditions as set in the attached resolution.
Thank you. Would anyone like to come forward and speak to this item? And with this, we'll open the public hearing. Appears that no one needs to come forward, and so we'll close the public hearing. Does the commission have any comments?
Well, this one too seems like they're good. They don't have any complaints. They've been following the conditions that they need, so it sounds good to me.
Anyone else?
I have nothing to add.
Do we have a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Go ahead, Karen.
I'll second.
Great, and all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that motion passed. And now we're going on to agenda item number seven.
Planning Commission is asked to review the concept plan for Stone Group Commercial Second Edition as requested by Stone Group LLC and to hold a public hearing regarding the concept plan. This project, the conformance with local and regional plans and ordinances, this property is located within the 2040 Metropolitan Service Area Boundary. The proposed properties are located within the B2 Central Business on the east side of Johnson Street and R2 Single Family and Townhome Residential on the west side of Johnson Street. The 2040 comprehensive plan requires 10-acre minimums for properties located within the 2040 Municipal Service Sewer and Water area. At the time of planning of Stone Group Commercial First Edition, the Metropolitan Council commented that two-acre minimums for commercial properties are acceptable because two acres is an average lot size needed for commercial uses, even with the availability of municipal sewer and water. From a financial feasibility standpoint, a business owner will not purchase more land than what is needed for the business to thrive. The background, city staff reviewed the plan. At this time, there are no comments from staff. The concept plan is comparable to the 2002-approved Worgopon subdivision as shown in Attachments 3 and 4. Worgopon subdivision is R2 Single Family Townhome Residential on the west side of the street and Light Industrial on the east side of the street. The Light Industrial properties have an average lot size of two acres, which is comparable to the proposed lot sizes of the Stone Group Second Edition Concept Plan. The two acres provided enough space for stormwater pounding, septic well, parking, and the building. The Stone Group Second Edition will be accessed off of Highway 65 from 209th Avenue. All properties will be accessed from Johnson Street. And housing, the plan consists of two residential lots and a ghost plat illustrating the potential for further subdivision of the lots when municipal sewer and water is available. It should be noted that all of the proposed lots will require a variance for lot size. In the B2 Central Business and R2 Single Family Townhome Residential lots, lots without sewer and water connections have a 10-acre minimum lot size. In addition to lot size reductions, the B2 Central Business ordinance requires lots without sewer and water to be a minimum of 300 feet wide at the public right-of-way. In the chart provided, it goes through that there, in, with the R1 lot, there will be a size reduction of 2.26 acres. There will not be any necessary lot with reduction. Lot R2 will need a lot size reduction of .4 acres, also with no lot width reduction. Lot B2-2 will require a 7.96 acre reduction. This one does not require a lot with reduction. B2-3 will require a seven-acre lot reduction with a 160.22 feet lot width reduction. B2-4 will also require a seven-acre reduction with a lot width reduction of 7.54 feet. B2-5 will require a seven-acre reduction with 17.64 feet width reduction. B2-6 will require a seven-acre reduction with no lot width reduction. Lot B2-3, as it is proposed, is a flag lot, which is prohibited by City Code Chapter 66, Article 6, Section 66-163 lots of the City Code. Based on the feedback provided on the concept plan, the developer will modify the plans to make application for the preliminary plat. Staff is requesting that Planning Commission hold a public hearing, take public feedback on the proposed concept plan, and informally advise the developer on adjustments to the plan.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to come forward and speak to the matter?
I'll just say that I am here.
Can you come up? Can you come up to the microphone, please? And please state your name and address.
I'm Bruce Montgomery, 20881 Buchanan Street, Northeast, East Bethel. I live in the northwest corner of this property, and I'm also here representing Stone Group and Cambridge State Bank. Also with me tonight is Larry Fredlin, who did a lot of design work for this. So we are here, ready to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to come forward with questions or comments? Thank you.
Mark Claus, I live at 20967 Buchanan Court. I would live, and the property is right at the T, to the north and to the west side of the street. And I am in their work, so I'm just questioning. You know, over the years, they've changed that zoning a whole bunch of times on us back there. So we're just really curious on, you know, it looks to me like the east side of that's gonna be all commercial, correct? And then from the T going to the south cul-de-sac, that's gonna be single-family homes?
West side of the road.
Correct. So right now, you're just proposing to put one house on each lot on both ends of the wetland?
That is, that is correct there. The ghost platting, they have to show, shows this isn't the intention.
We need that, we need you to come up so it's on the record.
I can explain it. So the ghost plat is for, say there's future development to the north of 209th Avenue when sewer and water becomes available. The property owners of the two residential properties on the west side could choose to do improvements and bring sewer and water down there and subdivide at this higher density. So if they were to choose to, they could add additional, like, add additional lots based on if their, the first house that was put there would allow for it. So it's not required, but this is a potential for higher-density development once sewer and water is.
Right, so you're saying that to the north, you would have the option to hook up?
Well, so that.
The first property at the T.
So if you're looking at, like, at 209th, Pat Small Engine is to the north of 209th, and then there's an outlot up north of that.
Yep.
So if that were to sell for development or additional businesses wanted to come in, and right now, the, there is an opportunity for a lift station, but it would be very costly for any one developer. So if multiple developers wanted to put that in, it is a possibility. It's in the plans for 2040, but that's all development-driven.
Okay. I guess, speaking for the neighborhood there, of everybody that's backed up to that piece, is we just wanna make sure that it's gonna be single-family homes in there and not more commercial. Okay, we're cool with that.
Yeah, I have a vested interest in that too.
Okay, yep. Because, like I say, that's been switched around a bunch of times that road was built. Years and years ago, we called it the Road to Nowhere for quite a few years, but I think they changed hands and whatever. But yeah, we don't have a problem with that at all. We just didn't want commercial sites in there, right in our backyard. Could be a, you know, a manufacturer or something that's running all night or, you know, a gas station that's open 24/7 right in the yard there, whatever. I just wanted to clarify it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, and, you know, one of the reasons that we ask people to speak at the mic is just to get things in the minutes. Is there anything that either one of you gentlemen wanted to say? Y'all, y'all okay? Okay. All right, does anyone else want to speak to this issue? If not, then we'll close the public hearing on this item. And we'll go to the commissioners' comments. Glenn Terry, who's the chair, did write an email. Do you want to read it, or do you want me to?
Can you read it?
Yeah, I sure will. Okay, so Glenn wrote, "My only comment on the agenda packet is on item number seven, Stone Group Commercial Second Edition. It seems that the developer is trying to cram in as many lots into a space as possible for financial gain rather than a more balanced approach that also considers the effect upon residents." This is apparent in the insertion of a flag lot and in the ghost plat, squeezing six lots around the upper cul-de-sac, putting homes on R4 and R5 rather close together. Also, R10 at the lower cul-de-sac seems like it has a very small frontage. Are there any comments from any of the other commissioners?
Only that, I agree. It does look like they're really crammed in there and with the wetlands, it would be nice if we could get a little more space between houses rather than six.
Yep, tonight, though, we're not talking about the ghost plat and the number of lots there. This is just the concept plan with the two residential lots. So the ghost plat is just showing that in the future, it potentially can be split like that.
Sorry, yeah. I was gonna make that comment. Yeah, no, and again, I agree with Glenn on those same concerns. But again, that's just, again, ghost plotting is just there for potential and to show because it's a part of the process. And really, again, today here, we're talking about the, only the R1 and R2. But if I had gone down that road and this was in front of us, I would say that those houses don't exactly, based on this ghost plat, doesn't have to be in that spot. Those are, if you look at them, they are, I mean, those are over an acre-sized lot. You could shift those houses back, you could turn them, you could move a lot of different variables into that. But again, that's not what's on the topic for the moment. But otherwise, I, everything looks pretty good to me on it.
What about the flag lot? I mean, I thought I read that that's against ordinance, should we have any issue or concern with the flag lot?
Again, I guess going back to even Stephanie's comment, again, this is just ghost plotting. It's just showing potential.
That's not on the ghost plat, that's part of the concept plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood Glenn's comment then.
I mean, I guess I just found it interesting that B2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 all seem three acres, but the B1 and B2 were smaller in just the size. I don't know if we needed to have any concern for the flag lot and how to have the lots that they're defined.
Erin, do you know if there's any issues with the flag lot?
Most, most metro cities do not approve flag lots. If there was a way for it to be moved, you guys could deem one of the recommendations to adjust that so that it is not a flag lot. But if that was something that council was willing to approve, a variance could potentially be granted for it.
Okay, so someone would like to speak? Should I just open the public hearing again, or?
If someone wanted to speak, you could.
What's that?
You don't have to open the public hearing, you can all, if you want.
Okay. And could you just state your name, please?
Larry Fredlin, I'm with the applicant. The reason that the B21 is a two-acre lot is that's what Dollar General wanted. Our, the realtors that we've spoken with, when people are looking for lots along the highway in this area, they're looking for three acres. So we're confident we'll be able to get rid of another two-acre one. But the other three acres is really just in response to market demand. And the other reason that that's a flag lot was, and I don't know when the flag lot ordinance came into effect, I didn't look at the history of that, maybe it's always been in there. Unfortunately, though, when the surveyor laid out the B21 for Dollar General, we had been working with this plan for a few years at the time, and it was just not raised our attention. So one thing that we could do is ideally, we'd like to keep that two acres and keep the rest of them at three acres. So the flag lot is an ideal arrangement because it is a three-acre lot, not a two-acre lot. It's really just a driveway access to a two-acre lot or bigger. But we could clip the corner, draw a line straight in between to make that an angled connection between B22 and B23. It's not ideal, but a variance would be preferred.
But the access would still be at Johnson Street, right?
Yes. But you talked about putting a piece of playground in there? Oh, it's for a little residential. We didn't, but ghost plotting was those lot usually. When you put that many in, you gotta make it a city, like a city area, and a playground type of thing for a picture anyway.
You and I have a discussion up there.
Yeah, so discussions have to be up at the mic. But he asked about, would there need to have a perk in this area because of the potential of all the residential lots? That is at the discretion of the Parks Commission making a recommendation to City Council.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Is there any other discussion?
I understand this is a ghost plat. I understand that there's 11 sites on that side, on the west side. If I'm understanding correctly, you're waiting on development until water and sewer comes through. And when that happens, this will be eligible. And when that happens, this will be eligible, just like the Elvage Project, to change, correct?
Based on conversations with the applicant, and correct me if I'm wrong, these two residential lots will be up for sale. It is, it has the potential to further be subdivided and developed at a higher density at a time when sewer and water is available. But they, the buyers could just put one house there and call it a day. There is a potential that this could just be two residential lots for a very long.
Correct, there's a potential for that. Yes, there's a potential for that, and there's a potential for many other variations.
All of which would still have to come before us though, too.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, I just, I like to be upfront and honest. And what I see is, is that there's all different types of variables with the ghost plats here. So.
So, then really, it's a matter of how we want to address the flag lot before, with the approval. Because if we approve it, then we'd have to approve it with a variance to City Council.
Variances would need to come forward, yes.
Yeah.
And at this point, we're not even making a recommendation, are we? We're just getting feedback.
The Planning Commission will make the recommendation of changes that you guys would feel need to be made to this before they bring preliminary plat to Planning Commission.
Yeah, it's not a recommendation, though. I mean, tonight, it's just gathering informal comments. So, tonight, you guys will give us your comments. We'll go, and those will go to City Council, and City Council will gather their comments. And then we'll take those and give them to the developer.
Okay, thank you. So, my comments about the flag, flag lot is, I'm not enthusiastically in support of it, but I guess I don't see a reason if, if that's the best solution for the whole project. I'm fine with it. Does anyone else want to specifically address the flag lot?
I would agree with your comments on that, Sharon.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, I don't think we need any motions then, do we? All right. Okay, I think our discussion is done. Everyone's had a chance.
Thanks, Vera.
And now we will go on to city reports, please.
All right, hi, I'm Suzanne Erkel. I'm on the City Council. First thing I want to say is with the holidays approaching, please, please be aware of scams. There's a lot of scams going on. If somebody calls and says, "You got to pay with a gift card," or "We're going to shut off your electricity," or "Get your son-in-law out of jail," or "Your sister," or whoever, call the police. If you, also, if you see somebody, and if you have one of those Ring cameras and you see somebody scoping out your place, which has been happening a lot in East Bethel, if you see them peeking in your car, call the police and get them a copy of that because they have investigators, and this is going on in all these surrounding cities, and they're trying to nab these guys. That said, I want to start with welcoming Morgan Mueller to our Public Works Department. He's a new Public Works tech. We did approve that Anderson Meadows plot up coming up. We approved the Jewel Street setback. The, we did approve the zoning map amendment, and we approved the auto repair to come to the Planning Commission to do an IUP for a home occupation for the auto repair. That make sense? Okay. And with that, I'm going to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Are you guys meeting in December?
I believe so.
Yeah?
At this time, we do not have any applicants. And so, we'll get.
All right, well, just in case, I'll say happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas if I'm back, whatever.
Happy New Year then.
And happy New Year too. All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne.
All right. Any other items before we adjourn? If not?
I guess I'll, I'll just make, same comment again, Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving, and Happy New Year and all for, for everyone.
We may not see each other till next year.
Other than that, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye. Good evening, thank you everyone for coming.
Meeting's adjourned.